Good afternoon, welcome to the November 12th Policy Meeting of the Phoenix City Council. We will call today's meeting for order, to order, and begin with council information and follow-up requests. This is an opportunity for city council members to request information or provide updates on issues of interest to the community. Do we have any council member requests for information or updates? And it's also a very exciting meeting today, it's our first meeting with our new Vice Mayor, so congratulations. Councilwoman Stark.
I just have one thing, I just wanted to announce after about a year and a half, North Mountain Tower Road is reopened. People were very patient, especially when they were going southbound on Seventh Street. And the good news is next summer when we start our paving again, Seventh Street will be paved. But it's very exciting, I've already gotten a lot of calls, people very excited that the road is open for hiking, and I want to thank everybody's patience on that one. And speaking of North Mountain, last night I went to a lovely event, it was a Boy Scout event where they officially retired flags. The flags that we had collected, they had collected at Royal Palms, Fourth of July, and last night they retired them, it was a very moving event, they do it every, veterans stay at North Mountain Park. So if you ever have a chance, and I'll make sure I remember to announce it next year, you really ought to go to one of these events, it's very, very moving, so, but happy, the road is open.
All right.
Councilwoman Noakowski.
Mayor, we have some exciting things happening at Margaret Hands Park this weekend. So we're gonna have our pizza festival, so if you're into eating pizza, we're gonna have 20 different pizza makers out there with all kinds of different pizzas, so it's $10 to get in and come eat some pizza. And then on Sunday, if you're into donuts, we're gonna have our Donut Festival also at Margaret Hands Park, so come on down and sample all the different pizzas and donuts this weekend, on Saturday's pizza and Sunday's donuts. And just to remind everyone about the Jerry Jackrabbit Drawing Contest, the deadline is November 16th, that's that Saturday, so if you're still interested, you can look on our website or you can go to www.phoenix.gov/parks. Also, we're having, we're recruiting, if you're interested in being an instructor and helping out with classes or programs in our, in our parks and in our arts classes and dancing classes, music classes, sports and fitness, and even lifeguards, we're looking for individuals out there, so you can go to our Parks website and register to become one of those instructors or lifeguard, and if you're bilingual, even more so, we need those bilingual instructors out there. And finally, I'd like to thank the Phoenix Suns for, and it was council member at that time, Felicita Mendoza, that got an inclusion program at Caesar Chavez High School. We're looking at building a new community center out there at Caesar Chavez Park, and meanwhile, we're gonna have an inclusion program for all those children that we heard during our budget times that they were looking for a place to call home, so we were able to do that with the Suns Charity, and we really want to thank the Suns Charity for everything they do in our communities and for this inclusion program that we have at Caesar Chavez High School right now. And last, if you're in South Phoenix during Thanksgiving, they moved the Thanksgiving breakfast from the McDonald's on Southern Central to the Food City just, just south of that, so come on down and get a free meal and enjoy some entertainment on Thanksgiving Day. And thank you to Food City and Julian for putting this tradition on for over 25 years. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any additional updates? All right, we will, and Vice Mayor, I understand we do not have a call for executive session.
No, we don't have a call for executive session today.
Excellent, then we'll move to item number one, recommendation on Home Rule. And I'll turn it over to our city manager to introduce the panel.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, I'll go straight to our Budget Director Jeff Barton, and he will introduce the item and walk us through that. Jeff?
Thank you, Ed. Mayor, members of the council, good afternoon, it's a pleasure to be here. I've got with me Deputy Budget and Research Director Amber Williamson, she will also be giving portion of this presentation. So we're here today to talk to you about Home Rule, so what is Home Rule? So back in 1980, Arizona voters approved an amendment to the Constitution that limited the spending for cities and towns back to 1979, '80 expenditures adjusted for population and inflation. Fortunately for us, they did have a little bit of insight when they passed that amendment, they also gave a provision that allowed us to exceed that with voter approval. That provision is called Home Rule, and so basically every four years we go through this process to allow the voters to kind of vote on us exceeding that limit. So why is Home Rule important to us? Well, it's important for a variety of different reasons, but again, think back, so you're almost 40 years ago, voters didn't know how the city was gonna grow. So the city of Phoenix is, is a big metro area, we're the center of that, we provide lots of regional services that voters probably in 1980 couldn't have even thought that we would have, right? The airport serving drastically more people today than they were back in 1979, '80. So what it does not account for are those voter-approved taxes, specifically things like public safety, we've got three dedicated sales tax funds for public safety, we've also got the Parks and Preserve Initiative as well as, you know, the transit and light rail taxes. So those things weren't in play back in 1979, '80. Without going through the Home Rule process, we would not be able to provide those services even though we're taking that money in because we'd be exceeding our budget. Also, again, I talked about the regionality of Phoenix, Phoenix has a lot of regional services, the biggest one is the airport, so we serve the entire region and the entire state with Sky Harbor. So just having the airport alone would almost, almost exceed our Home Rule option. And then we also have wastewater convention center and light rail. And then finally, the other thing the voters didn't anticipate were the changes in federal regulations, those regulations related to wastewater, water, light rail, and other things of that nature, those weren't in place. Those things also come with additional expenditures to make sure that we follow those federal provisions. So again, that's also not covered in Home Rule. And then I'll turn it over to Amber, and she'll talk to you specifically about our process, the process that we go through, which has been kind of a best practice for us over the last nine, nine times.
So since 1980, Phoenix voters have decided to approve the option for Home Rule nine times, thank you. Each of those times have involved a mayor and council-appointed task force to study Phoenix's current fiscal situation as well as the effects of the limitation and to recommend next steps. Since 1999, Phoenix's spending limit has been set at its annually adopted budget, which is a very open and transparent process, bringing about community engagement through council forums, budget hearings, and other ways that city residents can communicate their needs and any budget changes. Phoenix's current Home Rule option expires on June 30th, 2021, and in order to cover the next four years, an option would need to go on the ballot and be presented to voters in November of 2020. This is an overview of the schedule showing that the task force will conduct their study and review throughout the month of February, they'll bring back recommendations to council in March, then in April, public hearings will be held, and the required analysis will be submitted to the Auditor General's Office, and then council will adopt the form of the ballot in June, and the election will take place on November 3rd of 2020.
So Mayor, members of the council, the action that you have before you today is basically allowing us to start this very tedious and time-consuming process, appointing the task force, allowing that task force then to review our detailed revenue and expenditure estimates that we prepare, also studying the potential impact of the limit on our budget and what those types of changes would require us to fit within the limit. And then finally, recommending a solution to you for inclusion on that November ballot. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have about the Home Rule process.
Thank you. We do not have any cards from the public on this item. Councilmember questions or comments?
Mayor, I have a question.
Councilman Noakowski.
So this, does this include our enterprise businesses that we have such as the Airport Convention Center and Water?
Yes, it does, Councilman Noakowski.
And another suggestion would be, Mayor, I would suggest that each one of us actually have a representative on this task force that's gonna be created by, by yourself, if that would be all right.
Could we, could staff remind us of what the documents say about the task force composition?
Mayor, members of the council, we're actually not required by the Constitution or the statute to do a task force, we've done that though for many years because it adds a lot of credibility to the process, there's no required minimum or maximum number of individuals who need to be on the task force, that's entirely up to the council.
Mayor, just by virtue of history, in the past, there have been task forces that have generally been around five members appointed by the mayor and the council, I think that's been our last, three or four have been a total of five appointed members, and the, it's important for folks to have a strong background in finance or public policy because it is, it gets into the minutia of the constitutional provisions and it's a, it's a very concentrated period of time to go through the entire financial, city's financial picture, so that's been the history of how the, the task force has been established.
And I have spoken with some groups that have been involved in the past, such as the Chamber of Commerce, who have been good partners, who have agreed that they would be willing to continue again to help with that, and I think it's helpful to have broad support, including from our business community as we go forward.
Thank you.
The other... Then Vice Mayor, are we ready for a motion?
Yes, I would like to make a motion recommending to begin quadrennial review of the Home Rule option.
Okay, whoever. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you and good luck with this ambitious schedule. We next move to item agenda number two, related to solid waste service levels.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council, Karen Peters, Deputy City Manager, pleased to be here this afternoon to talk to you and to the community about the Solid Waste Enterprise and our operations and finances. Before I introduce my colleagues though, I do want to recognize some individuals, a couple of whom are here with us today. In June of 2018, the city manager appointed a Solid Waste Rate Advisory Committee consisting of a number of Phoenix residents, including Dan Vermeer, Jose Asparza, Wes Harris, Didi Yasi Devine, who I believe is with us here today, and our chairperson, Richard Ray, also with us today. I want to thank these individuals who gave us many, many hours of their time and their expertise over a period of 18 months. We had very detailed and spirited conversations about the solid waste rate enterprise, enterprise and its rates. As, as you'll hear today, we've not increased our solid waste rates for 10 years, and so we took our responsibility very, very seriously, and the, and the committee did as well because of the impact that these rates have on all of the residents in our community. So I want to thank them very much for, for taking the time and the time to be with us here today. Also want to thank staff from the Public Works Department as well as our Finance and Budget and Research Departments who also spent many, many hours in the room talking with all of us and providing details. So today's report is for information and discussion, we will post notice of potential rate and fee increases, and then after the turn of the year, we'll return to the council to consider a adoption. With me today are Public Works Director Ginger Spencer, Assistant Public Works Director for Solid Waste, Joe Jades, CFO Denise Olson, and Budget and Research Director Jeff Barton. So let me talk briefly about what's gonna happen next. So today, we will talk about the history of our rate over the last couple of decades, we will also talk about our solid waste services that are provided in the community, our history with regard to recycling as well as waste diversion, challenges that we are facing today, and options for the enterprise as we go forward. So with that, I will ask Jeff Barton to take us through our next couple of slides. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen, Mayor, members of the council, I want to focus your attention first and foremost to this slide on the screen now. I'm gonna spend a few moments and walk you through the history of the residential solid waste rate, and you can notice that this slide, you can see for the first two-thirds, the first two decades, first 20 years, that there was almost a normal and customary rate increase. So in 1990, we went from $7.50 to the current $26.80 in 2008, 2009. That's an increase of roughly $19.30 over that 20-year period. The second thing you can notice from this slide is over the last decade, the last 10 years, that rate has been stagnant, that rate has been flat. I think that's really important to emphasize because over that span of time, the last 10 years, while the rate may have been flat, the services, population, and the tonnage have not. All of those things have increased, our services to the community have increased, specifically our diversion programs. So how did the enterprise manage to maintain that rate for 10 years despite all that upward pressure on service? Well, I'll walk you through that now. First and foremost was the fund balance. The, the enterprise itself had accumulated a fund balance that got to as high as $57 million in fiscal year 1314. That fund balance has been strategically drawn down now to provide some relief to our rate payers as well as just relief to the overall rate itself. At the end of the first quarter of this fiscal year, September 30th, that rate, or that fund balance had declined to about $37 million. So that's a $20 million decrease that went towards stabilizing that rate over the last couple of years. Then second, recycling revenue. You'll hear a lot about this in this presentation, and we spent a lot of time talking about this with our, with our committee as well. The recycling markets have been very volatile, and like many of the other entities that participate in recycling, we saw a lot of revenue in the early years, so anywhere from $9 to $13 million a year was coming in from recycling revenue, that's the sale of those recyclable commodities on the, on the open market. Again, that's $9 to $13 million a year that was coming in to help stabilize that rate and to again, keep pressure off of our rate payers. Then the third item is something that is also not new to you, this is something that we've talked about on the general fund side of things too. During really lean years, we made decisions to defer vehicles and capital investments, so too did the enterprise of solid waste. Specifically, I'd like to draw your attention to, in a really good year, to keep up with their vehicles, they should be replacing anywhere, they should be replacing about 28 vehicles a year. In really bad years, they replaced, they replaced as few as five. So again, that's kind of speaking to how many of these types of deferment changes that they made to kind of keep that rate flat. Then also employee concessions, I won't go into a lot of discussion on this, we all know the history here, starting in the early, in the early 2000s, the late part of this decade, we went, our employees took about 4.2% worth of concessions, that afforded the enterprise some ability to see some reduced costs. And then finally, operational efficiencies, Ginger and Joe will talk about this a little bit more in detail, but the enterprise developed and identified about $7 million worth of operational efficiencies, those also helped keep that rate flat. So those were the actions that the enterprise and staff took to kind of keep that rate from, from growing over the last 10 years. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ginger.
Thank you, Jeff, thank you, Karen. Mayor and city council, thank you for this opportunity to update you on our solid waste program. As Karen stated, I too would like to reiterate our thanks to Chairman Richard Ray, I guess I won't turn around because then I, you won't hear me in the mic, and members of our Solid Waste Rate Advisory Committee. I'd also like to thank Jeff Barton, our Budget and Research Director, and Denise Olson, our CFO, and all of our dedicated staff for their work on the solid waste performa. So Public Works Department is one of the largest departments in the city, responsible for the proper collection, processing, and disposal of solid waste materials. We serve approximately 400,000 households throughout Phoenix each and every week, and that number continues to grow. As part of our services, we offer weekly collection of garbage and recycling, we offer bulk trash collection four times a year, and that's for your big and bulky items that are too big to fit in your regular garbage containers, and this also helps us reduce illegal dumping. We process recyclable materials. We process our garbage at our transfer stations and bury it in our landfills, and we host nine household hazardous waste and electronic collection events for items such as paint, electronics, car batteries, and that's nine times throughout the year. We provide all of these services and programs to our single-family residents for a monthly fee of $26.80. I say residential customers because of our city code does not allow us to provide solid waste services to commercial and multifamily customers, those services are provided by the private sector, and as, as you've heard, our rate of $26.80, the monthly rate, has remained the same for more than 10 years. So who are we? I like to say we're people, trucks, and the facilities we own and operate. We have 600 dedicated and hard-working solid waste employees who comprise the men and women of Public Works. We have garbage truck drivers, environmental specialists, engineers, solid waste workers, and apprentices, just to name a few. We are solid, we are Public Works strong. We have 433 trucks and vehicles that we use to collect garbage and recycling throughout the valley, and that's all 518 square miles. We have two transfer stations and two recycling facilities at the same location where we process our garbage and recyclables, and that I like to point out again, that the city owns. We have one active landfill that opened in January of 2006. Our landfill is located in the city of Buckeye off of State Route 85, that is 60 miles one way outside of the downtown core. We also have five closed landfills, one of which is a former Superfund site that was delisted in 2006. This is our 19th Avenue landfill, which is located on 19th Ave and Lower Buckeye. When it comes to these five closed landfills, we're responsible for maintaining, monitoring, and reporting our environmental controls in perpetuity, yes, you heard me correctly, that would be forever. And our landfills are highly regulated. It costs the city $29 million annually in cost to run our transfer stations and our landfills. And our largest solid waste contract is our hauling contract to take our waste to our landfill. So why do we do what we do? We want to be good stewards of the environment and preserve our natural resources. We're required by state law to ensure the health and safety of our Phoenix residents through the effective and efficient collection of solid waste, and we're required by city policy to divert more solid waste from the landfill by repurposing our waste, also known as reducing what we consume and throw away, reusing what we can no longer fit or no longer need, and back in the day, that was known as call me, hand me downs, or where you donated items you no longer wanted to goodwill or other charities, and recycling in order to preserve our limited resources. As they say, one man's trash is another man's treasure. So I'd like to give you a little bit of our history in solid waste. So we started solid waste services in Phoenix in 1915, when city council approved the formation of a small dedicated team, i.e. Horse and Buggy, whose main job was to collect and dispose Phoenicians' trash in an organized and timely manner. And fast forward to today, 2019, 104 years later, as you can see, we've come a long way. The truck that is on the screen is the latest model of our collection truck, and I'm happy to announce that we just received a $1 million Diesel Emissions Reduction Act, or DERA, grant from the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, EPA, which will allow us to replace nine diesel-fueled garbage trucks and one long-haul truck with new CNG trucks, compressed natural gas. So 2019 is also significant because this marks the 30th anniversary of Phoenix's recycling program, and this Thursday, November 15th, is America Recycles Day. So to build on the history of our recycling and waste diversion programs, as you can see in 1998, excuse me, 1989, city council approved the Phoenix Recycles Pilot Program, which was expanded citywide in 1991. Phoenix opened its first city-owned transfer station in Murph in 1998, and due to population growth, city council approved a second city-owned transfer station in Murph located up north, that same, excuse me, located up north. And that same year, in 2006, we closed the Skunk Creek landfill, which is also located up north, and opened our sixth landfill in Buckeye, Arizona. In 2013, Phoenix City Council established the Reimagine Phoenix goal to achieve a 40% diversion from the landfill by the year 2020. In 2016, Phoenix City Council approved the 2050 Sustainability Plan, which included a zero-waste goal by the year 2050, 2050. What that means is everything that can be diverted from the landfill will be diverted from the landfill, but that usually is a 90% plus diversion goal. So at the time we set our 40 by 20 diversion goal, Phoenix had a 16% diversion rate. I'm happy to say that as of July 30th of this summer, we achieved a 36% diversion, exceeding the national average of 34%, and we did all of this on a voluntary basis without any mandates, fees, or fines. And so our strategy to achieve this ambitious 40% diversion goal from the landfill was by using a three-pronged approach. We expanded our outreach with youth, with presentations at schools, as well as we expanded our outreach with residents through neighborhood meetings and community cleanups. We enhanced our solid waste services to our residents and customers such as offering a tan container pilot program for residents interested in diverting yard waste from the landfill, and eco-stations, which are drop-off recycling locations for Phoenix multifamily residents. Thirdly, we fostered public-private partnerships and public-public partnerships. And the photo that you see on the screen is, this was a partnership with the U.S. Chamber of Commerce when they brought businesses, representatives from businesses from across the nation to tour our facilities and learn more about Phoenix's efforts in leading the nation and building on a circular economy. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to our Assistant Public Works Director, Joe Jades.
Thank you, Ginger. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So Ginger already touched on national diversion rates, so cities much like Phoenix across the country, in recognition that sending materials that we collect to the landfill is not the sustainable future we seek, have established diversion goals, and we wanted to share some of those cities' progress towards their goals. So the national diversion rate is at 34%, and again, Phoenix is proudly now at 36% ahead of that national goal, I'm sorry, national target. Los Angeles is at 76%, they do have state law that mandates and bans certain things from the landfill and mandates diversion. Austin, Texas is at 38%, San Antonio at 36%, and Dallas is at 19%.
Can I ask a question?
Woman, pastor.
Does mandates, the city mandates or the state mandates?
In the case of California, it's both state mandates, and there's oftentimes county mandates as well in place.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So a question we're frequently asked when it comes to a discussion about solid waste rates and fees is, how do our rates and fees compare to others? This is a very difficult question to answer because solid waste utilities often structure their programs and services in very different ways from city to city, and their rates are often structured in very different ways. But we did have a professional consultant help us with a cost of service analysis, and one of the tasks we asked them to perform was a benchmarking analysis, so I'll share those results with you. The city of Austin currently charges a residential monthly fee of $51.80. I'd like to highlight that I'm also sharing with you the size of these cities, one of the reasons I'm sharing that is, solid waste utility very much is a transportation logistics cost driver in our business, and so the size of your service territory does in fact impact your costs, and so we wanted to just share that for comparative purposes. Los Angeles is at 36.32.
Councilwoman Stark.
As far as I said, you also look at how far they have to transport it, like I know we transport ours to Buckeye, so for example, does Austin actually have a landfill within their jurisdictional boundaries, or do they have to drive quite a distance like we do? I'm just...
Mayor, Councilwoman Stark? Yes, in the case of Austin, they are transferring their waste like we are. And, and you're right to point out, there are a number of factors, so how far you have to transport, where your transfer stations are located, these are all factors that come into play. What I really want to highlight is the fact that transportation expenses are very much a big part of our expense.
Correct. Thank you.
Okay, San Antonio is at 29, Dallas, Texas at 27.29, and Phoenix is at 26.80 currently, that's, and we are the largest in terms of service territory. We also did ask our consultant to benchmark our rates against some of our local cities. So the city of Mesa's current residential monthly rate is at $30.18. Here, we're sharing with you... Here, we're sharing with you not only the size of the city, but also the population, just because Phoenix is so much larger than any of the other local cities here. Phoenix's current rate at 26.80. Tempe at 25.60, Goodyear at about $23, and Glendale about $22.
Councilwoman Stark.
Thank you. And so comparing to these other cities, they too have recycling as a part of their solid waste fee. Does it include recycling?
Mayor and Councilwoman Stark, all of these cities do currently still have recycling services. I think Mesa's recently announcing some minor changes to their program, but they're still offering recycling services.
Okay, thank you.
And Mayor?
Councilman.
Could we just get a list of every city? I mean, why didn't you pick Chandler or one of the other cities? I'd like to know what that thought process was. So why not provide the entire council? How'd you come up with these cities?
Yes, Mayor, Councilman DeCiccio, we actually have, through the benchmarking, I think, a series of some other cities, so we can make that report available to you. We're just sharing some of the cities that have some similarities to the services that we're providing.
Okay. Just provide every city in the Valley, that would be fine.
And Mayor, and Councilman DeCiccio, so in our cost-of-service study and the actual benchmarking analysis that our consultant did, he did also include Chandler in that. Just so you know, their residential rate is $16.93. So we have looked at all Valley cities. The cities that we provided to you that are within the state, right now, Phoenix is the second to the highest when it comes to cost. So, but we can provide that information.
And just so you know, I am a fan of recycling. I mean, I like the idea, I love the concept. I know that the markets have dried up, I get that. But this is, I want to make it very clear that the majority of this, by far, maybe close to 18%, at least the numbers I'm looking at, is not about recycling. It looks like it's about a 20% increase that we're asking for here of the taxpayers. And of that, it's about 18%, at least what the base rate is. I'm going to ask that later when you're in your presentation, but just preparing you ahead of time. Trying to get a number for that recycling number.
Thank you. So you saw this chart earlier. These were our solid race residential rates from the year 1992 to present. What we wanted to do is take a look at the impact of inflation. So this red line represents what the inflation rate has been over the last 10 years. And so essentially what that's saying is, what you could purchase in services 10 years ago for 26.80 would require $32.07 in today's dollars just to cover for the cost of inflation. Of course, inflation is not the only thing we're experiencing as a solid waste utility. This chart represents population growth that we're experiencing in about 10-year increments. So for the solid waste utility, for the last 10 years, we've added about 30,000 new residential customers to serve, and we're anticipating another 30,000 to 40,000 in the coming years. The reason that's important is it does require additional trucks and additional drivers, additional capacity at the landfill and transfer stations to provide these services. So there's been a lot in the news about changes in the recycling market. I wanted to touch on this. The country of China announced a major policy change. And so for about the last 20 years, I would say 60 to 70% of the recycling that Phoenix was making and selling, in particular cardboard and newspaper, China was buying much of that material. And so when they changed policy and decided no longer to accept that material, it did impact prices, not just for Phoenix. That's a national impact, frankly, an international impact. There are some things we have done that Jeff touched on, as a solid waste utility, try to keep our expenses down over the past few years. So we implemented a program called New Way Same Day. And by rerouting the city, we were able to reduce trucks and drivers. Also, our conversion from traditional diesel to natural gas for fueling our fleet is better for the environment, and it also is better for our pocketbook. And then we lease out land that we have available to generate revenue to the utility. We also, because fleet is such an important part of our asset infrastructure, undertake programs to either size down equipment where appropriate or also rebuild equipment. So in particular, a piece of equipment that might cost a million dollars, when you can rebuild it for half a million dollars, that's a project we would undertake. So just a quick note about some of our operational challenges. Our solid waste fleet is, much like a water utility, is dependent on it, on pipes to deliver water to homes. We're dependent on our trucks as our assets to provide our service. They're driving the streets of Phoenix every day. Because we've deferred some equipment replacement, our fleet is at an unhealthy age. And we're seeing that in the cost increases in maintenance, as well as increased downtime. So this is an investment priority for us. Continuing to invest in our capital assets, our transfer stations, and our landfill is an important investment. And in particular, to help respond to the population growth that's coming our way, so that these assets are well-positioned as we continue to add new customers. And then finally, this slide shares with you some of the recycling revenue. So as Jeff pointed out earlier, you can see that we've had some ups and downs in the market. Generally speaking, though, we were generating between $8 and $12 million of revenue to the solid waste utility up until 2017, 2018, where those major policy changes have impacted our revenues. I guess I would say we should probably have a dotted line from 2019, 2020 to 2020, 2021, because that's a forecasted conservative revenue, that we would have zero revenue potentially next year. We're on pace this year for about 3.3 million in revenue, which is about a $5.9 million decline from just a couple of years ago. I'm going to turn it over to Jeff.
So Mayor, members of the council, just really quickly, because Joe's already touched on some of these, I'm going to talk to you about four financial challenges that the enterprise currently faces. The first two are, again, things you've heard before in my presentations as we've gone over the general fund budget. The first and foremost is employee costs. That's the biggest driver right now for solid waste. Over the last 10 years, the personal service costs have gone from $45 million a year to about $55 million a year. So that's a $10 million increase. The amount of staff that the enterprise has had has been roughly flat at about 600 or so staff members. So when you do the average, that's roughly an increase in staff cost, average staff cost of $72,000 to about $93,000 per year. The largest driver in personal service costs, though, is pension. So their pension costs have gone from roughly $5 million a year to about $10 million a year. And so that's why their personal service costs have increased. The second item is, we talked about earlier, deferring those capital investments, deferring the vehicle replacements. By doing that, they're having more maintenance costs. Over the last five years, their maintenance costs have gone from $15 million a year to about $20 million a year. So that's a $5 million increase as well. And then the last two, Joe talked about a lot. So we've got a decline in recycling revenue. Again, we had a high wayback win of about $13 million. So somewhere between $8 to $13 million has been our number. This year, they're estimating about 3.5, 3.3. But again, for modeling purposes, we assume zero growth, or zero revenue from recycling going forward. And that was just based on the conversations that we had with the committee, as well as the volatility in the market and not really knowing what's going on there. And then finally, our reduced fund balance, based on the analysis and the work of my right-hand, my CFO over here. She's recommending that the enterprise maintain a minimum operating reserve of about $25 million. And so to ensure that, that also has to be predicated and built into the overall rate discussion. And with that, I'll turn it over to Denise.
Thank you, and good afternoon. So now that you've seen or have heard all this background information, one thing that we did this last year is the Finance Department worked very closely with B.R. and also Public Works to develop what we call a baseline financial plan. One of the things that we do in that financial planning process is we do a detailed, rigorous review of all the revenues and all the expenses. So one thing that we did was we looked at our other sources of revenues, things that could offset the residential rate requirements. So Public Works identified three additional revenue sources that we could put into the financial plan. The first one is the balance recycling contract, which would update all of our contracts with partnering cities and private companies to adjust for the increase in our recycling contract cost. The second area of revenue enhancements would be implementing a commercial permit. So what we found was the majority of our neighboring cities have a fee that they charge to private haulers who provide collection services for multifamily and businesses to operate on their city streets. So on average, this costs is $1,000 per truck. The last opportunity to increase other revenues would be to raise the gate rates for our customers who direct haul to the landfill. One thing that we want to point out is we do want to deter dumping, illegal dumping. So we do offer a free service once a month for City of Phoenix residents. So when we look at all those revenue enhancements, we think we can get an additional $2.5 to $3 million annually. And so that offsets our revenue requirements.
Mayor?
Councilman Noakowski.
The commercial permits would be about, how much are you guys estimating?
The cost.
What's the cost?
We were estimating $1,000 for the permit fee, and we were anticipating about $1 million a year.
Now, would that be monthly, or is that annually?
That's an annual amount per truck.
All right. And then the balance of the recycle, first one, the CIP?
So we're looking at about $670,000 annually.
Denise?
Councilwoman Pastor.
So the commercial permit currently is what? What's the cost?
So right now, the city of Phoenix does not have this fee.
Okay, so we don't have this, and we will be then implementing a new fleet fee.
Correct.
And then the raise, the gate rates?
So right now, the gate rates are $38.25. And the initial fee increase that we will be looking at is up to $42. Now, that may increase as we go through the next five years, but the initial increase will be about $42. So the other thing that we did was we looked at the expenses side, right? So we looked at, one thing we did is a rigorous review of all of their projects in the CIP. And we did that with the Citizens Committee. So we prioritized every single capital project. We also verified the timing of those projects. And as Joe mentioned, there was also some identification of efficiencies and savings that we could also build into the financial plan. So I just want to say that the initial financial plan that we were looking at, we had a revenue shortfall of about $36.5 million. Once we were able to optimize some of these revenue sources and project these efficiencies, savings, and have a rigorous review of the CIP, we got this down to about $31.1 million.
Councilwoman Stark.
With regards to efficiencies, I know at one time, oh gosh, it might have been 10 years ago or so, Public Works had talked about just doing away with alley pickup and going strictly to the front yard or street pickup. I know Mesa did that, and they said there were savings to be achieved in that. If I recall, it didn't work, was that because a lot of the neighborhoods really do rely on their alleys and prefer to have the alley pickup? Or is there really true savings or not?
So Mayor Gallego and Councilwoman Stark, thank you for that question. So we did look at going to curbside service citywide. 20% of our customers are currently have alley service. And as you know, we've got very diverse neighborhoods, and we've got neighbors who are very passionate about their alleys service, and some that are okay with us switching to curbside. And even in some cases where we were able to switch to curbside service, they still wanted their bulk trash collection in the alley. So what we do know is, is that if we were to switch to curbside operations, that would make it safer for our drivers. However, from a cost standpoint, we weren't able to actually figure out what those savings would be. And I don't know, Joe, if there's anything you'd like to add.
Mayor, Councilwoman Stark, what I would add is, I think it's safe to say there would be some savings. It's really hard to put a finger on what those savings would be without actually doing it. A city, and it would almost have to be citywide to really realize the savings, because one of the big savings opportunities would be to maybe go to a different type of truck. And you really can't do that if you're going in and out of alleys.
And may I also add, oh?
Councilwoman, Vice Mayor, and then Councilwoman Pastor.
So I think that was one of the questions that I, that I, that I originally had asked, was trying to like really, at least trying to give like a, maybe even like a rough number of what, of what that would look like and what the savings would be. Because I think at the end of the day, I mean, I'm not going to speak for all constituents in the city of Phoenix, right? Because I can't. But I think people would definitely go more for that than to see an increase on their, on their bill. I think we have to take like a serious look at that, right? And see what the savings would actually be. I mean, maybe I know that there's like some upfront money that we would have to pay for the trucks. But then at the end of the day, how much, how much would we actually save once that program was, was implemented?
And Mayor and Councilwoman Guard, Vice Mayor, Guardado, I would like to add that we currently do have a pilot program in District, Council Districts 3, as well as Council Districts 5, where we are piloting and moving that solid waste service to the curbside away from the alley. So we are looking at that, and we're trying to gather our costs and see what savings can be obtained.
Councilwoman Pastor.
So there was an efficiency plan done. I don't know if it was 10 years ago or at what point it was done. And that's when the whole conversation of the alley versus the front came about. But because there was a strong vocal concern within the neighborhoods, the city chose, or the leadership chose, not to move forward. I think we're at a different point in time at this moment in the sense of what does that efficiency look like? And what can we save in bringing it to the front? Now, I will say I'm in the center core of the neighborhood of Phoenix, and my historic districts have a deep conversation about this. I think what now, as the time has evolved, we have safety issues that are going on. And what is evolving within the core is wanting to shut the alleys and be able to take responsibilities of the alleys due to some of the issues that we're having. So I think it's a perfect time, right now, to do something in the sense of finding, looking back at the study, or looking at what today is, quickly analyzing the numbers, and being able to have that dialogue as we look at doing a rate increase. And how do we continue to be efficient and be able to move things in a way that can help the whole city and help also those that are on a fixed income? So I would like to see that. I think there's a collective that would like to see it.
So Mayor Gallego and Councilwoman Pastor, we will pull up all of our past reports having to do with alley service going to curbside, and we'll look at updating those numbers.
Councilman DeCiccio.
Thank you, Mayor. And Ginger, just so you know, wherever I go on this, it's not a reflection in you or your department. I think you've done an incredible job over there, and really appreciate all that you do for us. And I get the point, too, of what's happening around the world right now, being able to take our recycled goods. I'm actually a fan of it, and I think that that's something that we should be striving for as a city. It doesn't bother me on that, that end of it. I'd like to have more of an idea of what it is that you're asking for, just on the recycling end alone. Let me give you my numbers, and then we can go from there. Because I just, I know we were trying to get that from you guys today, but at least it gave you a heads up with the kind of questions I'm going to ask you today. So, you know, and I also believe that if you look at what's happening around nationally and internationally when it comes to recycling goods, it's just no market for it. And we shouldn't be dumping on countries like the Philippines and others, where they've turned their trash back to Canada. I get it. We shouldn't be doing that as a country or even as a city. You don't, you don't turn your problems over to others, you deal with them yourself. So, and there were a couple of things right off the bat. You know, you talk about the last 10 years, but you look at where we should be. Well, if we should be, we should be striving toward a Chandler. They're at $16.30 a month. You know, I'd like to know what that difference is, is why are we so much higher today? Second highest, now we want to be the highest. But why aren't we striving to be, you know, on the low end when it comes to, when it comes to charging the taxpayers? Remember, my goal isn't just about what you're doing or anything else, it's whether or not the taxpayers can actually afford this. And so density, the city has become more dense. Density should increase efficiencies, right? Especially when it comes to waste hauling and things like that, where you're going to be, instead of driving, you know, 10 miles, you're going to actually be driving one mile or less because of the densities that we have out there. So I, I'm just throwing some comments out there. You don't have to answer them today, but at least be ready for it and give me something later. I'm not going to put you that far on the spot. I don't want to do that. But the other is, when we're looking at this thing, too... But the other is, when we're looking at this thing too, the percentage increase that you're asking for is pretty significant. And so, I want you to give me the numbers. My calculations show about a 23% increase across the board. I mean, so, that's a significant increase. If you look at what happened in the last year, the City of Phoenix increased water rates 10%. I mean, sooner or later, it's going to hit a wall where the public is not going to be able to afford this any longer. The way I'd like you to structure this is I'd like to get an idea of what that amount is specifically to recycling only. And just from my calculation alone, looking at, you're welcome to tell me I'm wrong. I have no problem with that. But if you're looking at that, I'm looking at the base rate that you're asking for, and you can't answer this part, okay? The base rate without anything else in there is $4.75, correct? That covers your pension costs and everything else that we've got that are part of your department, $4.75. If I'm wrong, say so.
That's correct.
Okay. And so, then what I'm looking at too is the, the every other week recycling, which seems fair to me. But, you know, that would be another 75 cent increase, correct? Because it's $5.50 less $4.75 is 50 cents, correct?
Mayor, Councilwoman DeCecio, yes. We're going to go through each of those options and talk through what the differences among them is?
No, but I want it done my way, not the way you guys write it down.
Would it be possible, Councilman though, for them to do the four options?
Oh, I didn't know that.
And then, go to your questions?
Right.
So, we will still get all their questions, but that way?
Oh, I thought you were done with it. Okay, so, I want to make sure that you're answering it the way I'm asking it. Not the way it's presented in here because it's really hard for people to understand it. But I want it to be done where it's broken down, where this is the base amount, this is the increase, that we're looking for each of these options so that we can compare the options equally and fairly. I thought their presentation was done. Go ahead, sorry.
Mayor, City Council, so I'll just finish up on this slide. Basically, we did have a financial plan. We identified $36.5 million of revenue requirements. We got that down to $31.1 million of revenue requirements. From that financial plan, we did package ups in different rate options with different service levels. And so, with that, Ginger, we'll walk through those options.
Okay. Thank you, Denise. Mayor and Council, I will try to run through these options in the next five minutes. So, we recognize that rate increases are difficult. And as you've heard, we worked very hard to reduce the rate to as low as possible. We worked with our advisory committee over 18 months. Our numbers were vetted by both Jeff and Denise. And we hired an outside expert with over 30 years of experience who did a comprehensive review of our 26 lines of service and the costs associated with those services. So, 10 years is a long time to go out a rate increase. So, I'd like to address what changes would be necessary if we did not increase our solid waste residential rates and then I'll jump into our four options. So, if there is no rate increase and we stay at the monthly fee of $26.80 a month, we would have to eliminate all four bulk trash collections that we provide each year. This is to come up with the difference, the $36.5 million that Denise mentioned. We would have to eliminate all nine household hazardous waste and electronics collection events that we do each year. We would have to go, move away from recycling every week and go with every other week recycling. We would have to shutter one of our two recycling facilities and just use the one that's located, transport all of our recyclables to the MRF that is located up north. We would have to eliminate all of our compost programs and shutter our compost facility. We would also have to remove all of the eight eco stations, which is the drop-off recycling locations for multifamily residents. And with all of these service reductions, again, these would be major service reductions to our customers, we would have to cut approximately 135 positions. So, the options. The first option we want to present to you is, what would it cost to keep doing what we're doing today? So, in order to continue to provide all the services that we currently provide for the 2680 and to reduce our shortfall, we would need a rate increase of $6.40. That would increase our rate to $33.20. Our second option is looking at eliminating composting. So, again, this is us getting rid of our tan container as well as any composting programs that we provide for private landscapers and shuttering our compost facility. With this option, we would have to increase our rate by $5.65 and that would bring the rate to $32.45. Option three would be every other week recycling. This option would still keep us in the recycling and the composting business, but it would allow us to reduce our overall operational cost. And this model was recently implemented this summer by the City of Tucson. In this case, we would still need a rate increase of $5.50, which would bring it to $32.30. And then, our base case, which Councilwoman DeCecio referenced, this would be eliminating all recycling and all composting. In this case, all of our material would be sent to the landfill. We would no longer have a zero waste goal or a 40% diversion goal. This basically represents what we would need in order to meet minimum legally required level of service. And in this option, we would still need a $4.75 increase, which would bring our rate to $31.55. And Denise will actually do the summary of all these options so you can see it listed and then we'll answer questions.
All right. So, to summarize the four options, first, we want to start with the current rate. It's 2680 and as Ginger mentioned, this would result in significant reductions if we kept the rate the same. It would result in significant reductions and also a decrease of 135 positions. Option number one is we would maintain all of our services. This would increase the rate to $6.40. This would bring in about $31.1 million annually. This revenue would allow us to maintain adequate reserves and it supports financing capital projects and vehicles that total about $95 million for the five-year period. Option two, this proposes that we eliminate composting. It cuts the rate by 75 cents to 32.45. This would bring in additional $27.5 million annually and it also supports a $95 million financing program. The third option is recycling every other week. This rate increase would fall to $5.50. The total rate would be 32.30. At $5.50, we would be bringing in about $26.7 million and this also supports a financing program with a capital amount of $90 million. And then, the last option is to eliminate recycling and composting. This gives us a rate of $4.75. There really is no CIP to do financing, so that just leaves the financing to the fleet, which is approximately $60 million. So, with all of these options, one thing we want to point out is we are assuming a 2% inflation factor and this would begin in 2021, 2022. If we don't have an inflation factor, we'll probably be looking at another rate increase in two or three years.
And Councilwoman Pastore has a quick clarifying question.
Yes. On impacts of no rate increase, that slide. If I read this correctly, eliminate weekly recycling and go to every other week. Okay? So, I'm reading that. I go to slide number four. As this slide says, impacts to no rate increase. I go to slide four.
Option four.
Option four.
Well, no, I go to service cuts. 2680. I am reading, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, when I read impacts of no rate increase, what will happen for 2680, I will have then go to every other week. Am I correct?
Right.
Right.
Among all the other impacts.
But I'm saying what it says to me, how I'm interpreting it, and so, I want to make sure I'm interpreting it correctly. Impacts of no rate increase. So, no rate increase, the impacts will be eliminating weekly recycling and going to every other week. So, then, we don't need a rate increase if we're going to recycling every other week. And so, look at, look at how this could be interpreted and read.
So, Mayor Gallego and Councilwoman Pastore, the difference between the two options is, without a rate increase, we would have to eliminate bulk trash, HHW, other services. And we would, if we're still have the policy direction to recycle, we would go to every other week recycling. And the option four, I think is what you're referencing, no, option three, is every other week recycling, right?
Go ahead.
That means that we still are providing bulk trash, HHW events, eco stations, and that sort of thing. The fourth option that says to eliminate recycling and composting was the one where, again, we're doing away with everything. So, in order to make up that $36.5 million shortfall, right? And if we are still in the recycling business, the option would be to go to every other week recycling in that option. But all of those other cuts have to take place as well.
So, you're saying, well, right, you're saying all these other cuts will take place except we'll go from weekly recycling and go to every other week and we can still have it at 2680?
Councilwoman, that is correct. If we are saying also that we will, we won't do any bulk trash.
Right. No, 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 I got that. But what I am saying is, in the 2680, I don't know where that grid is. On the 2680 service cuts, we will still continue recycling. We will go to every other week. That's how I'm reading it.
So, Mayor and Councilwoman Pastore, that is correct. One thing I do want to mention though is the reason that we offer our bulk trash service and our HHW events is so that we can keep those materials out of the landfill that do not belong there. The bulk trash service that we provide, that is to help us to deter, to reduce illegal dumping. The last time that we did a rate increase in 2009, when we got our bulk 35, 10 years ago, we were also faced with cuts at that time. And at that time, the public came out and said, we value our public, our bulk trash service. And that's why that service was not cut.
It was part of that study that we were talking about with the alleys and everything else, right? Or it was, it was at one point, an option a while back to remove or get rid of bulk trash.
I don't recall if it was a part of that study. We will find out. But what I do know is when we came forward to council and when we had meetings with the public, that was something that individuals felt very strongly about.
Thank you.
I also think it's important to note that even if we eliminate some of these costs from the solid waste department, they are still very likely costs we will face elsewhere in the city. So, if we allow people, if we don't give them a good tool with bulk pickup, that is going to create a lot more work for our code enforcement, for neighborhood services. With household hazardous waste, that could end up impacting our water supply. We've also seen, the East Valley had a fairly high-profile incident which our Phoenix firefighters responded to and others where, I think it was a lithium battery ignited and had a huge impact on a facility. So, it's not that we're eliminating these costs. It's pushing it to other departments and to other generations.
That is correct. To the extent that we are not doing these other services, it will have ripple effects throughout the community. Yes, I agree with that.
And could be potentially much more expensive. And this is something we should also think about, the impact on our future generations. If we're not, if we're landfilling material, it could be very high-impact.
So, Mayor, you are correct. If we were to get rid of these services, we would see a lot more illegal dumping. We see it right now and we are trying to respond with the, as best as we can with our current resources. So, we would definitely see an impact when it comes to illegal dumping and we would have those costs because we still would have to clean it. The other thing to your point is, is that some of this material is hazardous and it does not belong in our garbage containers. There's a safety issue there. And so, that's why we have these special collection events as well as if it gets into the landfill and the gases that it emits and that and whatnot. The other thing is, is our landfill operations is current, is very costly and highly regulated. And so, by sending everything to the landfill, that will advance our current schedule and there are costs associated with that.
And the cost the payers are paying today do not reflect the cost to landfill something for decades.
That is correct, Mayor.
So, that's something we should also consider, what we are doing to future generations. Councilwoman Stark?
And from a hauling cost, a transportation cost, how did you look at just gasoline, the fuel? And did you look at an inflationary rate? Did you make assumptions? Curious.
Mayor, Councilwoman Stark. So, when we look at our transportation costs, there's two factors there. The hauling cost to the landfill is strictly covered under a contract. So, that covers all their personnel costs, their equipment costs, their fuel costs. So, that's in their contract expenses. It does, that contract does adjust up or down and there's a separate adjustment for fuel because it's so much more volatile in costs. And that has been one of the cost drivers on that contract. For our own costs, we budget and forecast out our fuel expenses based on our CNG, our compressed natural gas fueling usage and based on our diesel fueling usage. And so, we forecasted that into our forecast.
I think Councilwoman, Vice Mayor?
So, one thing that I would like to see, because I see it here where you guys are eliminating all the different services and it says here, how many staff positions that would cost? I would like to see it for each option, right? Like if we're going to every, every other week recycling, if we're going into eliminating anything else, I would like to see how many staff positions that's actually going to cost us? How many people we would have to, how many positions we would have to eliminate?
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor. We did actually consider that very carefully as we prepared the options and each of the options, one through four, do not include staff reductions.
They don't, they do not?
There's, go. Okay. To clarify, options one through four, there would be minimal impact to our staffing. So, in those options, we're looking at eliminating up to 10 positions in one option and 10 in another or up to 16 in another. With those, reductions of those positions, we can absorb those costs. When you talk about eliminating services, Mayor and Vice Mayor, to your question, that 135 positions, we do have that breakdown. So, just for example, if we have to eliminate bulk trash four times a year, that's 84 of the 135 positions that we're talking about. If we were to go to every other week recycling, that would be 16 positions that would also be impacted as part of that 135. And then, we have the other positions that are a part of that as well. But we can provide that information to you and we have, we've started that analysis.
And I think Councilwoman Nowakowski has not had a chance to ask a question and then?
All right, great. Can you go to slide number three really quick?
At the beginning?
Here, option.
Option three or slide?
No, slide number three. The one right before that one, yeah. Let's see. Right after that one. That's it. So, under fund balance, there was a savings from 56 to 37 million. But then, under recycling revenues, what is the cost to actually run the recycling program for the City of Phoenix? We talked about the profit of nine to 13 million, but what's the actual, what's the actual cost?
Mayor and Councilwoman Nowakowski, the actual cost to run our recycling program is $31 million annually. So, the cost to collect our recyclables is 24 million and the cost to process it at our MRF is another 7 million.
Okay. And then, the, under employees concessions, how much savings was that? I know.
Mayor, members of the council, I don't know the specific amount that solid waste saved. I'd have to go back and do that calculation. But like I say, every employee took 4.2% concession. But like I say, every employee took four point two percent concessions. I'd have to go back theoretically and look at how much they saved. But keep in mind, even though those concessions were in place, personal service costs were continuing to still grow, specifically because of, of pension. So we talk about the concessions in terms of what employees gave up, but the cost did continue to grow. But I'd have to go back and physically calculate how much savings was generated by solid waste as a result of, of the concessions.
Perfect. All right. And then the other thing is, we talked about different revenues in the future. We talked about the, um, commercial permits of a thousand dollars, um, per year. I mean, we're talking about small mom-and-pop businesses, sort of like landscapers and people that are painters and cleaning up, um, yards and stuff like that, right?
So Councilman Nowakowski, we are talking about waste management companies. So these would be companies such as Waste Management, Republic Services, Freedmen's, Premier. So these are not necessarily your small mom-and-pop. Right-Away Disposal is another company. So tho, those are the, um, firms that we're talking about.
All righty. And then the other question I had was, um, I remember with the water, water rate, that we actually had some, um, community meetings outreach to the community, right? Even with the Sun's Arena, we went out to each district. We even had a meeting here in central Phoenix to talk about and to let people know that there might be an increase in the near future. Prior to that, years prior to that, we talked about the drought and, and the impact that it might have on our water bill in the future. What type of, um, community outreach or meetings have we had in districts? I can't recall having one in my district, so I'm just wondering if it's been happening throughout the city, or is it just this committee that was assembled that had these types of conversations?
Mayor, Councilman Nowakowski, we have had many, many meetings with our rate advisory committee, as you mentioned, but have not gone out into the community yet. We do have two, we have, uh, our next steps listed here to post our notice, and then we have a period of time before we would come back to the council. So there is an opportunity to do those kinds of meetings in each district and, and any neighborhood meetings that, that you'd like us to attend as well.
Now, posting a legal notice, um, I know that we had discussions here at the council, going back to the latest one would be the water bill, right? We actually voted on that. There's some members on the council that didn't feel comfortable with the, um, with the increase, but they felt comfortable in, um, in posting it. So who decides to post it? Does it go through the, through this body, or you all just get to post it, seeing there's going to be an increase without our input?
Mayor and Councilwoman Nowakowski, um, so today, we're not seeking action. We're seeking council direction, and wanted to present these options for your consideration. For solid waste, we've checked with legal. We've worked very, very closely with them. And so what we are required to do is to do the sixty-day posting. In the council packet, I, there's an attachment, and it actually basically shows the four, and we've got it up there, Attachment A, the four different options that we presented today, as well as what the, um, the increased fee would be to the gate rate. So those are for individuals going directly to our transfer stations or landfill, as well as the impact if someone were to get a smaller container, the three-hundred alley container, and the, to establish a commercial hauler permit fee. So that is the posting that is required of us, and again, it's just showing those options.
Once again, does it have to be approved by the council, or just you all can decide to, to increase and put a posting out there without our, without our approval of having any community output, input in it? Or conversations in the community, right?
Mayor, Councilman Nowakowski, so the Law Department says that there does not have to be a council action to post it for consideration. It is not, it is not requiring an increase. What it does is it opens the sixty-day window to do exactly what you're saying, which is to go and get community input. That could be either just people writing in. But as you noted, we've had a lot of success with water, with the arena, with the South Convention Center, of setting up community meetings to do that. We didn't want to schedule or do any community meetings until we had had a conversation with the council so that you would see this. But this, this could be posted on the city's website, and then we can go have the public meetings, come back no sooner than sixty days for any council action, which could be anywhere from zero to the top number that's listed there of six dollars and forty cents.
Well, I believe that my colleagues and I, once we hear situations or problems that are happening in the city, we're pretty good at figuring things out. But when you're coming up here to asking us to bail y'all out after ten years of no increase, and, you know, congratulations on that, but now it seems more of a bailout instead of, let's figure out a plan. And I feel like I'm being put in a corner here, and I really like to hear community input on this whole process because there's, I've been getting, um, I guess it was on the radio today, and somebody just texted me saying, "Well, you guys have been making all this money off the recycling and that we've been helping you all with, and now you want to charge us even more so." And just different comments that are starting to come in. And that was just that they heard it, I think, on K T R today. So I'm just wondering what other type of input that people feel that, you know, that we're not operating as in good faith, right? So I just want to make sure that people understand all the A, Bs, and Cs on this, and that they understand why there is an increase. And, um, just like that permit, I was confused. I thought it might have been small landscapers and all that. So we can have clarification, especially with people that are going to be affected by this. Thank you.
So taking Councilman Nowakowski's suggestion, I, I, and maybe clarifying it, I'd like to propose we do ten meetings spread throughout the city from Awatuki to North Phoenix.
May?
If it's about meeting schedule, Councilwoman Stark.
Yeah, it is, but I'd also like, in, in your scenarios, is there a way to look at maybe phasing this in like we did the water fees? If you recall, we did that in a two-step process. So I, I guess that would, wouldn't really be another scenario. It would just be looking at all the different scenarios and seeing if there's a way to phase it over a two-year period. I don't know if that's possible. I'm looking at all of you. I don't know if anyone can answer that.
Yes, Mayor and Councilwoman Stark, we would be happy to provide some options in phasing in the rate increase.
And then I think Councilwoman DeCecio and then the Vice Mayor.
Thanks. Along with, uh, with Councilman Nowakowski is saying, and then I'll be a little more direct about the questions I'm going to have. I don't have the votes to stop this tax increase. It's pretty massive. I think the public needs to know what percentage amount that is. And the kind of questions I'm asking you are, are questions because I want to make sure that they get on the record. So when the public looks back in time and says, "Hey, how'd this happen? How did we get screwed?", we'll go back to this time and, and realize what the council did to them. So I think to Laura Pastor's, uh, point here, even with keeping no rate increase, this is, um, there, there's still going to be some recycling occurring here. It's sort of every week would be done every other week. And the reason I bring that up is that these things always get sold as a recycling type of plan, but it's really not. This is not a debate about recycling. This is really a debate about pensions and internal costs of whether or not the City of Phoenix can manage their own internal costs. That is what the true debate about this is. It's not about anything else. And if anyone up here were to vote for this massive increase here, and this is massive. I count over twenty percent of where it's going to be. They're going to, the public will go up on, on arms. They're already upset about the water rate increases. On the same bill, you've got the same increase here of another twenty-plus percent. I think you're going to see a rebellion sooner or later within the public with all these tax increases that have been coming, you know, at, toward them. And I also don't believe that the public should be responsible for bad decision-making. And I'll give you an example. Several years ago, back in the early two thousands, I had a debate with one of my other colleagues, insisted on us owning and running our own landfill when, in fact, there was about a hundred-year, a hundred-and-fifty-year supply of available landfills out there in the valley, more than we had. I think Republic had five landfills out there, where we had one or two. I think Waste Management had a couple out there. We could have employed and done that. But that's, it's not their responsibility to bear the, the burden of bad decision-making along with that. So when we come down to permits, I've just got a couple of questions. I just want to make sure they get on record. What is the percentage increase that we're looking at?
Mayor and Councilwoman DeCecio, at the six dollar and forty cent rate increase, that would be about twenty-three percent increase. I would like to point out, if we were to have just kept up with inflation at that time, we would be at about a twenty percent increase, and that's about five dollars.
Or we would have been Chandler, and we would have had a decrease.
That is another option as well. We'll be sitting down with Chandler to figure out what is the differences between our operations.
Yeah, we should find out what they're doing differently. I mean, that's, matter of fact, that's one of the requests I've got. Find out what Chandler's doing differently. I kind of have an idea. But find out what they're doing differently and keeping their costs down. But go ahead. Uh, let's go through each one, what that percentage increase is on each.
So I don't have the percentage increase on me right now. But what I would point out is the eliminate recycling and composting, that is the four dollar and seventy-five cents. That's almost five dollars, so that would be close to about twenty percent. As, if you look at going to the next option, that would keep us in the recycling business and the composting business. We can go from four dollars and seventy-five cents with an increase of seventy-five cents to five dollars and fifty cents. If we were to eliminate composting, it's about a dollar increase. And then if we were to maintain all of our services, then we'd go from the four seventy-five to the six forty.
So from my end of it, what is the amount of monies you need? Because I do know what's happening in the recycling market. Not that I'm smart about it or anything else, but I do follow things pretty well and do follow what's happening in that market. What is the amount of, I've got between seventy-five cents and a buck sixty, somewhere in there, just for the recycling component?
So Mayor and Councilwoman DeCecio, you, you are correct. The, probably the impact of recycling would be about a buck fifty.
So for that part of it, and that's keeping it the way it is now, but if we did the once every two, you know, two-week thing, even though you've got it within your base here, I still got that as about a seventy-five percent, seventy-five cent increase, correct? In your next report, if you could have that in there, what that is. And so, and I'll let the council know where, at least where I would go just today. But, you know, again, when this comes forward, I want to hear what the public has to say and things like that, too. But at the same time, I am a supporter of recycling. I, if you were to bifurcate it, say, "Hey, we want to do this and screw to the public this way, but at the end of the day, we wanted to keep the recycling component", I'd be fine with keeping the recycling component if you separated those amounts because I would, I am, I do support recycling. The other is the, the point where we're dealing with staff versus positions, actual position, actual individuals. What is that number? If we kept it exactly right now, what is the actual number of bodies versus positions? And there's a difference, believe it or not. I found this out ten years ago.
So of the six hundred numbers, the actual bodies of that FTE count is about five fifty.
Five fifty? Of the how many?
Six hundred.
Of the, oh, six, but no, of the people you would have to cut if we didn't?
Yes.
So it's one, no, sorry, go ahead.
Of the hundred and thirty fi, I'm sorry, Mayor and Councilwoman DeCecio, of the hundred and thirty-five positions that are, that you saw on the screen, we could probably absorb about twenty of those positions. So those are actual bodies. These are people. These are garbage truck drivers that are out there collecting the trash and the recyclables. These are bodies. We actually have less than ten percent vacancy rate any time throughout the year. So we are constantly hiring throughout the year. So these are bodies. In addition to the drivers, they're specialists as well. We have a very, very low vacancy.
So about a hundred and ten of those approximately would be real bodies. I mean, it's important for us to know that. And then, uh, the other, let's see, oh, the illegal dumping thing that we mentioned, it's kind of a red herring. I mean, I know we're working on it and all that, but I'd rather stay with the facts that we know for sure rather than speculating in order to pass something. You know what I mean? I'd just like to stay with what we know. Want to make sure, though, again, that we do look at places like Chandler, why they're at sixteen bucks, you know, and where it's twenty-six today. I also like to see what your model is, and that way we can, give me plenty of time so I can research it, too, too. When we're looking at managed competition, you know, I'd like to look at what that model is. For example, the private sector, and we did some of our own research on this thing, too, because that's just what we do, right? The private sector replaces their trucks about eight, about every eighteen years, where we're replacing it every seven years. Why are we doing it every seven years? Why are we different?
Okay. So there are a few, few things in that question. So our replacement schedule is seven years, uh, replacement schedule. So we work very closely with our fleet services area, and we also look at industry best practices for cities when it comes to side loader replacement. This is similar to what we've, we've done for public safety. Whereas for their patrol cars, maybe it's a five-year replacement schedule compared to ten years for other vehicles. So we have that seven for our side loaders, and then a ten-year replacement schedule for everything else. When it comes to talking about the private sector, what we were told was closer to about a ten-to-eleven-year replacement schedule. And so we, we have worked closely with Republic Services and Waste Management to try to figure out why we're replacing them much sooner. In the cost of service study that our consultant did, he did look at other cities, and most of them are doing six to a seven-year replacement schedule. So he's, Dave Yonkey is here as well. I do have the percentage increases as well, if we want to talk about that. I didn't put that.
Wherever you want, at that point.
Okay.
Could I, go ahead, do the percentage increase?
Let's talk about the, the vehicle replacement question with the private sector.
Mayor, Council, uh, my name's Dave Yonkey. I'm the managing director for our, uh, environmental practice at NewGen. Uh, as was mentioned, I have about thirty years in the area of doing operational reviews and cost of service studies, uh, for cities. To your point on the Republic, and we, we do a lot of operational reviews for cities on their collection vehicles. And what we typically see the range of replacement, we have some cities that are anywhere from five to nine years. Now, you'll have trucks that go older. It's kind of that, you know, if it's running well, you keep running it. But we typically find that average is around seven years or so is what people replace. I'm not sure where you heard that the Republic is at eighteen years.
No, I didn't say Republic at all. We're talking other indus, individuals in the industry or something.
Oh, I apologize.
We call to.
Sure. That, that's definitely at the high end from what we see. So I, I typically see around seven years, seven to eight years for replacement.
But even if we use your numbers of ten years or eleven years, why is there a difference? I mean, our trucks are pretty much the same, aren't they?
Mayor, Councilman DeCecio, uh, so there's some differences. For most of our fleet, because we're doing residential home collection only, are these trucks we call side loaders, the ones with the arms that come out the side to grab the cans. In the private fleets, where they're servicing a lot of the roll-off containers or the, um, the larger containers, the cubic yard containers, they're front, they're a different type of truck. So for the front load or rear load trucks that we have, our replacement schedule is more like ten to twelve years because those trucks just have less moving parts and they last much longer. Their maintenance costs are not nearly as high. It is the side loader fleet when we talk about approximately seven years. We're probably more like eight years right now, maybe even closer to nine years right now in terms of our replacement schedule. And that's where we've seen the increase in maintenance costs hitting us.
Anticipating your answer, I've already asked the question. So like you to find out, make sure I'm correct on this. My understanding is replacing an arm is about twenty-five thousand dollars to do that. So why don't you find out what the cost of a replacement arm is on that? Maybe I'm wrong. I don't know. I, I did ask that question. So I did anticipate that. And so let me go through a couple, uh, on permits, um, if you, oh, go ahead in your percentages. Go ahead, sorry.
Okay. Mayor and Councilman, um, so in my notes, I do have the percentages. So at the four dollar and seventy-five cents rate increase to thirty-one fifty-five, that would be a fifteen percent rate increase. Every other week recycling of five fifty to bring us to thirty-two thirty would be a twenty point five percent increase. Eliminating composting at five dollars and sixty-five cents increase would be a twenty-one percent increase. And then increasing to six dollars and forty cents monthly to thirty-three twenty would be a twenty-three point nine percent increase.
Well, thank you for that. I appreciate that. So if we could, just, I want to, I'm not going to dominate all this time here, but, you know, we've got more questions we've got, and I know you met with us earlier today on this, too. So I want to make sure that you weren't, you know, blindsided on this stuff. The permits, I, I thought it was going to be mostly for, um, like, not mostly, but it would also be permitting those landscapers, and you're saying for sure it will not be them, correct? Small business guys.
Mayor, Councilman DeCecio, the structure would be that these are larger trucks. I think over twenty-six thousand pound gross vehicle weight trucks. So a smaller landscape-type truck would not be... would not be within that kind of a range of size, it's.
And how do you find those trucks? I mean, how are you going to be doing that?
So, if this is.
Are they the one, I'm sorry, go ahead. No, you answer, I'm sorry, I interrupted.
Well, one of the things that we need to do is actually meet with all the private haulers and discuss this option. And so this is something that they do in other cities, and the $1,000 that we're looking to charge is no different from the other cities as well, to my understanding, but we would have a meeting with them as well to discuss this.
It's also important to note that those are, those revenue options are that, they're options. The council could choose not to do that commercial permit, we would then have to find that million dollars of revenue probably back onto the residential customer side. So all this, all this is trying to get at different ways to spread the costs beyond the residential customer, but the council certainly would not have to do that if it chose not to.
Again, this, from my end, because I, I know, you know, where we're heading when we're talking about the recycling end of it, I want to make sure that the public is keenly aware, and for those that are in the media in particular, this is not a debate about recycling at all, this is literally a debate about our internal financial structure, and it's really about our pensions and everything else we're doing here. So, all right, I'll, I'll end it with that, thanks, we've got a long day, thank you.
Mayor and Councilman DeCecio, if I can add, when it comes to the commercial permit, right now we have environmental specialists that have to do enforcement on the private sector to make sure they're not out before 5:30 AM, 5:30 AM collecting trash and that sort of thing. Right now, we, those, the private sector, those haulers are not paying for those environmental specialists. So, that million dollars that were, could potentially have an additional revenue through this permit could also cover the costs for that specific service that's currently, right now, just being paid by our residents.
Thank you, because you gave me an opening to clarify a few things on my end, too. So, one, if we could look at what the cost is just for the recycling component, maybe a buck and a half, whatever it is, we're in there, I'd like to know what that is, you'd find me to be, at least today, favorable toward that alone, and if we were to bifurcate that here, I'd be happy to support that today, but I'd have to dig in some more, you know, because I want to, this is our preliminary first blush at this, too. Two, like to make sure that we're looking at the other cities that are out there, why Chandler's so much lower, like to know that, kind of have an idea, but, you know, I'd like to hear from where you guys are. Three, we're also supposed to be getting a, a report of every city in the valley, not just the ones we see in here, but what are, where are they all at, I think that's an easy one. Third, or fourth, I'm sorry, would be to also look at other models that are out there, the managed competition model, I don't know why we wouldn't want to even look at that. We were heading in that direction until we took a long, wrong turn on that. And then, I can't remember, but I'll, I'm sure I'll add more, thank you. Thanks, you did a great job today, thank you for that.
Thank you.
We have millions of dollars of additional costs that are related to changes in the recycling market. The reason Surprise has eliminated recycling is that recycling is a very real cost, and we do have to decide as a community, do we value sustainability? Do we value recycling? That is absolutely part of this debate. Councilwoman Pastor.
I think I got the answer. Where it says on page 14, proposed rates, it says an increase of $3.75. Is that the gate, or could you give some clarity to it? It's in the packet, it's our packet. It says increase $3.75, and then it, or.
Okay.
It says fiscal year 1920, $42, 2021, $42, and then it goes up to 30, $44. Could you please explain that to me?
Yes, Mayor and Councilwoman Pastor, so what you're looking at is Attachment A, and on the second chart, it starts off with the refuse tipping fee, so that's where we're currently at, $38.25. What we're recommending is a $3.75 increase, which would bring us to $42. We would stay at that rate for two years, and then go up from there by another $2, where we'd stay for another two years, and then we would take it up one additional dollar.
From 42 to 44, that's.
And Ginger, talk about where that tipping fee is applied, who pays that fee?
Okay, so again, that $38.25 plus the $3.75 should be 42.
Okay.
Okay.
And then we increase $2 every year?
$2, and then a dollar the last year, and we'd hold steady.
Okay.
To City Manager Zirker's point, he asked me to address who these customers are. So what I'd like to say is, Denise talked about this, our residential customers, they get a free dump at our transfer station once a month, so these are not those customers, unless they decide to dump more than one month. So what we're talking about here would be private haulers, landscapers, your, your mom and pops. And so, I'll use 27th Avenue as an example, they have the option to dump at our facility on 27th Avenue in Lower Buckeye, or they can go right up the street to 19th Avenue in Lower Buckeye to Right Away Disposal, or they can go to 43rd Avenue in Lower Buckeye to Republic Services. So in this case, these are the customers that we're talking about, and we have not increased that rate in 10 years as well. And so we wanted to do some adjustments here, but also recognizing that if we drove these costs too far, too quickly, that they would go to those other locations. But we feel that this amount that we're recommending here, the market could adjust to.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor.
So I, I would also strongly recommend getting, going out in, in the community, we are the fifth largest city in the country, and I 100% agree that we have to give the best service possible to our residents, but I also believe that we must provide the resident, our residents with transparency, we need to let them know what, what we're thinking, like, what, what's going to be happening, and we need to get an input from them, because I think a lot of the times, the best ideas come from our residents, right? They might have different ideas, you know, they're the ones that are out there day, day in and day out, we, for the, you know, we, we're looking at the numbers, and I understand that we have a responsibility to our budget, so I appreciate the presentation that you guys put together, and I know that it's not easy coming here and saying, look, this is what we need to do moving forward, but with that being said, I strongly recommend that we do this, and in certain, certain parts of our districts, I would also appreciate if we hold some of these meetings also in Spanish.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, we are only required to post, but I think it is important to go out and talk with our residents. Councilwoman?
So in these community meetings, are we showing the four scenarios, and we're also showing the rate increase? I, I mean, I'm assuming what, what you're going to show is this packet, or have something very similar, and then show the options, and if they want to pick an option of one through four, they can pick the option one through four.
Yes, Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, we would go through these options, and then to the extent that others are developed per, per your suggestions, we would talk through those as well.
So is there a possibility that the community could come up with a hybrid model?
Yes, definitely.
Yeah, and again, just as part of that, if you could do a scenario showing how it could be phased maybe over two years as opposed to one year, I think that would be helpful. Thank you.
We have some individuals who are here to address the council, we will start with DeeDee Yasi-Devine. And I join city staff in being grateful for the people who have served on our advisory committee. DeeDee will be followed by Tom Waldeck.
Good afternoon, Council, Mayor and Council, and employees of the Solid Waste Committee. My name is DeeDee Yasi-Devine, and I was, for the last 18 months, I learned more about solid waste than I ever wanted to know. I just, I don't really have anything else to add, I think I could have probably asked 90%, answered 90% of your questions, that's how thorough your staff is here at the City of Phoenix. All I wanted to say was, we met usually two hours at a minimum, sometimes it was two and a half and three hours, numerous meetings over 18-month period. I just want to say the integrity of the staff, they answered the questions just like you asked today, dice it this way, slice it that way, give us this, give us that, and I, I just want to say how, with how much integrity the staff asked, they brought the right resources, the right people in the room, they answered every question the committee had. I think that, you know, I, I think that we brought four options that, we didn't all agree on the committee, but we brought four, four options that represented all of us there, and I just want to say that, that's really what I wanted to just say was how, how much integrity the staff had during this 18-month process, and how they really tried to answer every question as deeply and as honestly and as specifically as we asked it, so, thank you.
Thank you. Tom will be followed by Lori Singleton.
Mayor and City Council, I'm Tom Waldeck, I'm the President and CEO of Keep Phoenix Beautiful. We have been supported by the City of Phoenix since 1982 by the Public Works Department. We, we educate between 10,000 to 15,000 children a year on recycling. If your kids have ever come home and say they saw Recycle Saurus, that's us. Interesting, the Carton Council had, had recently done a national poll that recycling is supported highest by millennials and Generation Z, far, far younger than me, 18 to 34 with 94, 92% reporting that they recycle. That's a pretty significant number, and something to keep in mind during all this conversation. Keep Phoenix Beautiful has just started our 10th year of our I Recycle Phoenix program. Over those 10 years, we have diverted over 2 million pounds of electronics, shredded paper, we even, we even take bicycles that people don't use anymore and make sure that they go to foster children. So we, we have diverted 2 million pounds of, of stuff out of the landfill. We have recently been awarded a grant from Coca-Cola to increase our special event recycling. We just completed the recycling for the Phoenix 10K, which was right outside the door here two weeks ago, and we do the recycling for the Rock and Roll Marathon, for the Pride Run, we are going to culminate this Coca-Cola grant with recycling at the, the LPGA Founder's Cup up in North Phoenix in March, they have never done recycling, and this is going to be a pilot program for the whole country for, for Coca-Cola. We also, Keep Phoenix Beautiful also manages two community gardens in the city, we are at 19th Avenue in Camelback in, in Councilwoman Pastore's district, and in Sunny Slope up at Mountain View Park where Councilwoman Stark is. These gardens have been a tremendous asset to the community, we use a lot of compost, we use a lot of stuff from Public Works to, to manage these gardens, and community gardens have really been shown to decrease the crime rates and increase the property values wherever they are, and I think we've proven that.
Wonderful, thank you for your partnership. Lori will be followed by Elise.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council, my name is Lori Singleton, I'm President and CEO for Arizona Forward, and we appreciate the partnership that we've had with the City of Phoenix for more than 30 years now, and this is my board chair, want to introduce yourself?
I'm Dave Skinner, I'm the Chairman of the Board of Directors with Arizona Forward as well.
Since reduced, reused, and recycled became part of the American culture in the 1970s, which was around the birth of the first official Earth Day, and was also about the time that Congress passed the Resource Conservation and Recovery Act, the concept of recycling has become the go-to for the average citizen who wants to do something good for the environment. It's ingrained in our culture, especially in our children, just like turning off the water when we brush our teeth. According to EPA, Americans are still returning about 68 million tons of raw materials back into the manufacturing market every year, with paper and cardboard accounting for approximately 67% of that amount. And that means, in the case of paper, for example, fewer trees cut down, less carbon burned, less energy and water is used, and there is an overall net gain for the environment. Recycling is good, recycling works, and we need to keep recycling. As well, the total American municipal solid waste composted was 23.4 million tons, this includes approximately 21 million tons of yard trimmings, almost a five-fold increase since 1990, and 2.1 million tons of food waste. Phoenix is to be commended for its state-of-the-art composting facility. And as we've heard today, with changing world markets, declines in commodity pricing, and evolving packaging, yes, recycling has its challenges, and we need to find ways to innovate to meet those challenges. Look at our oceans, our rivers, parks, wildlife, and air quality to see the debilitating effects of materials that have been discarded as a result of human consumption. Efforts around the globe are focused on reducing our use of certain materials, recovering the materials that we do use, and improving our processes to lower our impact on natural resources. It's hard work, but it's worth it. Arizona Forward supports the City of Phoenix's efforts to continue its commitment to recycling and composting, recognizing that Phoenix has long used sustainability as a guiding principle for your current programs and future plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Elise will be followed by Dori.
Good afternoon, Mayor Gallego, and members of the council, my name is Elise Guidis, I am Executive Director of Discovery Triangle Development Corporation, which runs the Farm Express Mobile Market Program. I also serve as a member of the city's Environmental Quality and Sustainability Commission, where I've served both as Vice Chair and as a Commissioner. As you know, the commission encourages and promotes the social, ecological, and economic objectives of sustainability to improve quality of life for current and future generations. The EQSC has a long history of supporting recycling and diversion programs as effective and safe means of solid waste management to protect the environment and safeguard the public's health. I think the benefits of recycling have been pretty well established, and there's certainly, you know, better experts here, so I'm going to kind of just go down to, to tell you that it's worth stressing that Phoenix residents and businesses expect and value recycling services, and the commission regularly hears from residents, and especially residents in multifamily housing communities, who want the city to provide more options and access to recycling services, not less. We've also heard very similar sentiments from several small business owners as well. I can tell you that during my two and a half years on the commission, we, recycling continues to be one of the most discussed and valued topics of conversation, both by citizen advocates and the commissioners themselves. In short, I think Phoenicians really consider recycling as integral to being not only the fifth largest city, but, or, fifth largest city in America, but also to being a sustainable and thriving city for everyone. So thank you so much for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your service as well. Dori will be followed by Alicia.
Hello, I'm Dori Morales, I'm, oh, sorry, Green Living Magazine, and I'm the publisher of the magazine, and we have a partnership with Public Works Department, and it involves communicating to the public what goes in the recycling bin, and educating the children why, why recycling is so important to future generations. We partner on an Earth Day event that engages the public in simple solutions to divert waste, we educate the importance on being good stewards to the earth. We also have a partnership for America Recycles Day and the Green Business Leaders Program, which the Phoenix businesses divert their waste. And then we also do reports with SWANA and what's happening and trending in the solid waste industry, and we featured many articles on illegal dumping and food waste, and the championships that the City of Phoenix has done, and I think it's important to engage the community, to engage the public, what's happening with kids and what we can do to divert waste from the public.
Thank you. Alicia will be followed by Kevin.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, I was hoping I would get her additional 50 minutes, but I suppose not, so, thank you, I'm excited to be here today, I'm also an excited City of Phoenix resident, as well as an Arizona State University employee, and I'd first like to say that I'm really proud of the work that the City of Phoenix has been doing over the past several years in the space of circular. over the past several years in the space of circular economy and sustainability. It's put the City of Phoenix on a map and in a light and a trajectory that hasn't been seen before, and really proud to be a part of those efforts and to support those and to see what it, see the fruits of our labor. Circular economy has really been proven to be an economic driver and an attractor for the City of Phoenix, aside from just diverting waste and recycling. It's also important to note that along with reviewing these proposed measures, that there are positive implications and negative implications. Some of the positive implications, as we've seen, are job creation, job retention. These are things that are important to think about. It's also important to think about the population growth that's going to continue to occur here in Phoenix and the pressure and stresses that it'll put on the infrastructure, like Public Works, water, et cetera, and coming up with innovative solutions to solve these problems. And also thinking about resource recovery. You have organic and inorganic. The inorganic typically referred to as recycling. Composting is organic recycling, technically. There's also negative consequences. There are unintended consequences that people may not perceive to think in happening and making decisions, but it's really important to think through. We're talking about complex problems that require complex solutions. It cannot always reduce them to cost. It's thinking about where are we today? And as Mayor Gallego said, what do we want our community to look like for our kids? What do we want our community to look like for our grandkids? Right now, Public Works makes roughly fourteen trips to the moon and back with their Public Works trucks out to the landfill. Some of the negative unintended consequences of that are GHG emissions. Recycling would help to reduce those loads, which will help our GHG issues. There have been several articles in local publications about our GHG issues. Also, keeping things like composting helps to reduce our GHG emissions. Composting and organic waste actually have huge implications for our GHG. Increase in our GHG will ultimately start to affect economic attraction and populations moving here, which will affect our city on various levels. So, thinking through the unintended consequences of the decisions we make is crucial to think about. Also, I think that, thinking back to, I think it was two thousand and fifteen, when the Phoenix residents approved an updated general plan with more than seventy-six percent of votes to, for the forty percent diversion. So, City of Phoenix residents said, yes, we do want to divert our waste. And so, in presenting this, that's important to reflect on. City of Phoenix residents already did say, we are in support of recycling. We're in support of innovation to do these things at a seventy-six percent approval rate. That's pretty high.
Thank you. Kevin will be followed by William.
Thank you, Mayor and members of City Council. My name is Kevin Goddard. I'm currently pursuing my Master's of Sustainable Solutions at Arizona State University, and I just wanted to come here today to really point out the fact that this is an incredibly important issue. I do believe that talking about our composting and recycling for the City of Phoenix is a sustainability issue, and this debate is about sustainability and the message that we want to put forward for the City of Phoenix. We're still fighting the bird on fire, the stories in the least sustainable city. And I think, as Alicia mentioned, that this is a step that could be very dangerous for Phoenix if we were really going to tell future generations that recycling's not a priority, that we're willing to try and redo how we actually manage our waste for the city. So, echoing that point and echoing what Tom from Keep Phoenix Beautiful said earlier, future generations care about this. Over ninety percent of my generation thinks that recycling is not an extra step to something, but is the bare minimum. It is the baseline for the least amount of effort you could possibly do to live a more sustainable life. In the past, I worked with the City of Phoenix as the Chief Sustainable, or Chief Student Sustainability Officer for Phoenix Union, and the number-one requested thing that we did across the board was include more recycling bins in those classes. I worked as the liaison for the city so that students, their number-one request is increasing our recycling and increasing our composting. So, I think that we need to change the dialogue of this discussion away from saying our four different options, because several of those don't seem like options to me. They seem like worst-case scenarios, because if they threaten the vitality of our composting and recycling issues, or systems, they can't actually be an option that we consider. So, I wanted to say that from my generation, my friends, neighbors, colleagues, fellow students, we all feel that recycling is absolutely crucial, and it's, I believe, that we can have just that bare minimum effort to lead a more sustainable life. So, thank you to the work that Public Works is doing here, and we're really advocates for that and proponents of recycling. And that is what's really at stake here, is if we take that step in the wrong direction. Right now is a time that it matters so much to tell future generations that current leaders are going to prioritize those future generations and the impacts and the costs that come from being irresponsible with our systems. So, thank you for taking the time, and please consider the fact that this is really a debate about how we want to show Phoenix as a city in a time when this nation's not viewed very sustainably around the world. We need to send a message to future generations when they do look back and say, is this something that we prioritized? We can say, yes, we absolutely were taking the right steps for that, and we're willing to pay a little bit of an extra cost and work with those transformational solutions to reduce the cost of those systems. Thank you.
Thank you. William will be followed by Claire.
Hi, my name is Bill Campbell. I'm a Phoenix resident in Councilman DeCicio's District and I work at Arizona State University. One thing I want to point out is when we talk about recycling, we're really talking about diversion. Okay, so it's more than just what's in the blue bin. It's also organics and household hazardous waste. Keeping stuff out of the landfill, which is, which is important. We can't just focus just on recycling. The, so I encourage, I urge you all to incur, to continue existing services and to continue to maintain Phoenix as a leader in innovation and sustainability. All businesses raise their rates, you know? Where was the outrage when iTunes raised the rates ninety-nine cents to a buck twenty-nine? Thirty percent. Certainly, maybe not raising the rates in ten years wasn't a good idea, but raising them now as a Phoenix resident, I hardly feel like I'm getting screwed. Okay, I think it's important that Phoenix continues to maintain services, and I urge you to, to support that option. Thank you.
Thank you. Claire is our final card.
Hi, my name is Claire Nelson. I live in District Seven, and I'm one of the Executive Directors of the Arizona Youth Climate Strike. So, my generation, my organization is completely made up of Gen Z. So, this is an issue that we care about a lot, and we feel that it's one of the most fundamental steps that Phoenix can take to becoming a more sustainable city. It's very important to us, which is why I'm here, right? And I think it's also worth considering, as Kevin said before, we can't actually consider getting rid of recycling. This is literally the bare minimum we can be doing for the environment. And if we want to prove that we're a sustainable city and we're working in the right direction, then we need to stick to at least the minimum goals, right, and go above and beyond that. Also, I think it's also worth the council to consider how, instead of diverting our waste, we can just reduce our waste in the first place. Maybe it's a public outreach program. Maybe it's regulations. I know the state isn't really good about that. We've seen other cities try to do a plastic bag ban, and it hasn't worked because of state regulations. But I think it's a really worthwhile thing for us to be looking into. And it will also, if we, being, decrease the amount of waste that we produce, then it will be a much lower load on the Public Works Department, and therefore, we won't have to raise rates as much. So, I think it's something worth considering. This is really important to us, and obviously, we're going to be here during the public outreach stuff as well. So, yeah, just fun to get it in early. Thank you.
Thank you. And the city does have a great record of every November, as we go into the holiday season, doing recycling awareness. But perhaps this year, we can really make an effort to remind people and maybe think of gifts that do not require as much packaging or no packaging as well.
Mayor.
Councilman DeCicio.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. And for those of you that are here talking about the recycling part, I agree with you on the recycling part. I like the part. As a matter of fact, might be able to do more on that. But it's everything else that's part of this increase that we're concerned about, or some of us are talking about. The majority, by far majority of this rate increase is something that has nothing to do with recycling. It's sometimes sold that way to the public so that we get you to vote on all this other stuff that's, I don't think is very good. So, I want to make sure we're really clear on that. I don't, I think everybody up here on the council supports recycling. I don't think there's anyone that doesn't. So, I want to make sure that that's on the table, that this is not a recycling debate. It's really a debate about pensions and internal financial structures of other things. And if they're willing to separate the vote, I think you'd probably get a unanimous vote on just the recycling part alone. So, that I want to make sure is very clear. I don't know who called you guys to come in here and talk about just the recycling component of it, but that's a very small part of what we're talking about here today. It's a lot more involved than that. It even goes into the number of landfills and whether or not we should be using what's already out there. So, I want to make sure, again, just to reiterate, that we get a more comprehensive look of all the other cities that are out there, look at what they're doing differently. It's okay to do that. And if there is a way of doing that to make, become more effective, again, this is really about how far the public can bear the burden of this. It's not just about the five dollars or the six-dollar increase or even more of an, it's actually more, of an increase. It's how far, when you add this, the water bill and everything else that the city taxpayers are now doing, they're already complaining. And I know Laura's got these complaints in her own district too, because of her area. I know you do, and I do too. And you're going to have a real hard time convincing some of us, me in particular, that we should be imposing this burden on the public, this higher burden on them, when we don't see the value, or at least I don't see the value in it. I just don't. I don't see how we can do this to the public and basically stick a fork in them again after all those increases that we've had on them on other things. So, again, be very clear, I support the recycling component. I don't support the other financial parts of the structure. Thank you.
It's important to understand that the additional expenditures related to recycling, particularly lost revenue from China, is larger than the pension contribution. This is absolutely about recycling. Do we want to be the largest city in the country without recycling? Did you have one? Okay. Councilman?
Thanks. Just because one of the speakers mentioned it. So, she mentioned plastic bags. So, I recycle my plastic bags, right? I take them in, and I think they also take dry cleaning bags at the, you know, Fry's and Safeway. I've dropped them off at both. It's right there in the front. Always seems to be filled up unless they clearly just, I just saw the guy cleaning it out the other day. So, that is the private sector, you know, picking up the sack, slack, sack, no pun intended. Realistically, yes, there's a state law and so forth, but, but the private sector moved in to fill the gap because they want to be responsive to their customers, right? And that's, those are their customers, and certainly those are their future customers, the younger people who spoke. So, are there other examples of that or other places we could partner? You know, milk, when I was growing up in Illinois, you had to go find places, and we did it, even my college roommates and I, you know, milk cartons and so forth, newspapers. There were separate receptacles and so forth. You didn't have it, like, right in your curb. Certainly, you didn't have it in apartments, and we don't do that here either. I think it was, was it Coca-Cola that just put in a hundred million dollars? Yeah, so, so, I mean, they're also trying to reach out and address this. Frankly, that means government doesn't have to, or at least not as much of it. So, if you're aware of other examples or how we, as a council, could reach out to industry to say, hey, you know, markets crashed and so forth, but you want to be good corporate citizens, here's one way you can be. Certainly, I commend the grocery stores for doing it, because I think I've read that, that on average, it's about one percent of the landfill is paper bags. Is that correct, Ginger?
Mayor and Councilman Waring, that is correct. And the program that you're talking about, Bag Central Station, that actually started in Phoenix in partnership with AFMA as well as with local businesses. And so, to your point, we could actually explore and see if there are other opportunities for us to partner with the private sector to divert other material that's currently being sent to the landfill.
Would Shamrock help with milk cartons? They're pretty big, right? I mean, I don't know, but has anybody asked? It might behoove you to ask.
And if there are any companies out there, any viewers that are listening right now that have great ideas and would like to partner with us, please give us a call.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Pastore.
So, as stated earlier, I don't think anybody of this council does not recycle or some do composting. As a recycler of, people will see me in the trash pulling out cans and bottles. In particular, at Phoenix Union, they know I recycle, so people around me, there's a gentleman that I work really well with that said, why are you doing that? And I said, well, one of the lessons that I learned at a very young age from my grandfather was recycling and composting. And I never really understood what he was doing, but we just did it. And I said, so I think it's a great value for my kids to understand that. And they want me to buy all these Xbox games, and I refuse to spend eighty bucks on them unless they're going to do something. So, I have them help me in my garage, stand outside, put the bags out, take apart garbage in the sense of cans and bottles, bundle it up. People walk to my house and they're like, what are you doing? And I recycle because I can, it, I have great pleasure in it because it relaxes me. It's an odd way to relax, but I get relaxed that way, feel like I'm accomplishing something. But in addition to that, it gets my family involved in understanding about the environment. And we, and then they earn some money on it. The other piece is, we did the cardboard for a while. Now, I'm trying to figure out what do, what can we do with glass, because I really don't want to put glass in the recycling bin, because, you know, it breaks, people get hurt. So, I get it. But I also get the fact that we're going to do an increase, and it does affect many families. Since, as a board member on Phoenix Union, ninety-five percent of our population or students are on free and reduced lunch, which means poverty. So, what is that balance that we do? And how do we balance it? And how do we move forward? And that's, that's, that's what we grapple with as we sit here. And so, we're just having a dialogue. We're, we're now in the midst of the dialogue. What I'm hoping is that out in the community, the dialogue is just as fruitful for us, that people show up at the community, that it's going to be impacted, especially our Westsiders that are working-class families, which a majority are in the West Side, part of Sunny Slope, and understand that there may be a fee increase. You also have people on fix-in cups. So, just know, we're just beginning the dialogue into getting to where we possibly may get to, or we'll just make a decision. I am more, I'm curious, because we have a sustainability department, where innovation comes in. And what does innovation look like for us in the sense of partnering up with companies and building that, or partnering up with universities? And how do we create that space of innovation? I also know when you do innovation, you take a risk, and you may lose and you may fail. But with the, I hope I got it, Gen Z's, Gen X's, Gen Z's, I think my kids are Gen Z's, what does that look like and how do we do it? And come educate us on ways we can do it and find a partner that's willing to take that risk. We are going to have to do more public partnerships around our, all these pieces and how does that look like? I agree with Councilwoman Waring. You know, I go to Target, and I, they have a whole recycling area. I bring my box in, I go specifically make around, and I put all the stuff that I need to recycle in there. Same with Best Buy, because one of the things were batteries. Where do I recycle batteries? So, these are things that we need to think about and also educate on the importance of it. We have a team that does it education. So, what does that look like? How do we, are we making, what impact are we making? These are all the questions that I have as, as we move forward in this process, to demonstrate and show me this data as to how are we making the impact. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Noakowski.
Well, Mayor, I just wanted, for the record, that this body up here has invested a lot of money in research. We even formed a campus to look at reuse and innovated ways of recycling and all that. And to my surprise, we're here more of a bailout, instead of telling us a plan, or looking at all those efforts that we've done in the past and all those millions of dollars that we invested, and now we're up to four options that we're going to give out to people. I don't think we vended this whole process enough. I don't think we came up with input. We have a great committee, and, and you work very hard, and I want to thank you all that served on this committee. But at the same time, as the Vice Mayor said, is that there's a lot of individuals out there in our community that have great ideas. But most of the time, what we do is we say, here's option A, B, and C, and D, and this is all you can choose from, right? And we're not telling them our full story of all the great things that we've, we hired a director to look into this kind of stuff and be innovated in the future. So, I like to see what we have done to actually make a dent with all these millions of dollars that we put into this, what we call the campus, and what kind of businesses we attracted. I know within my district, they're using used carpets and, and basically using the fiber from there to make nylon and, and up to eyeglasses and all that kind of stuff. So, those are some innovated ways that are to eyeglasses and all that kind of stuff. So, those are some innovated ways that are, that people need to hear those stories. And I want to make sure that we, as the City of Phoenix, have exhausted all of our options before just going out there and just throwing, throwing it on us to make a decision and, and basically not having input from the community and not giving them more options of looking at what the best practices are within the state of Arizona, but without, within the whole United States and basically throughout the whole world, really. And what are other countries doing that we can actually copy and use some of their best practices? So, that's the frustration that I'm having, is that we're going to take this out to the community with just these options. And I believe there's many more options, and we haven't had enough time to really have that dialogue and come up with solutions, as I call it, the Team Phoenix approach. And that's why I'm disappointed with this whole process of how it was brought to us. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So, as we go out to the community, we will solicit all suggestions and continue to look at ideas from other cities, the best practices that our residents identify. But I do think it's important that we start these community meetings, that we can get the feedback that's been identified. Any final comments before we adjourn? Councilwoman Stark.
And as far as these dates that you're setting up, the sooner you can get them to us, the better, because as you know, the holidays are coming up, and I don't want us to be criticized that we did this during a busy season for our residents. So, they will probably spill over into January as well, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Pastore.
I have one last question. I want to understand that option, I think it's option four, that with option four, I think it's option four, that we would, no, not option four. But my understanding is if, if we do not do a rate increase, we will do recycling every other week. We will eliminate all the other programs, but we'll be doing recycling every other week. That's how I'm reading it.
That's correct. Those are the options. But again, to address on Councilman Noakowski, what the posting does is it sets the ceiling, right? So, there's, there's an infinite number of options. What this is saying is that it's not going to be more than $6.40. But as we have public input and this, all this, there can be hybrid options created. I think someone asked that. We can come up with hybrids of these that may look completely different than these options.
And so, these are options that were developed with our advisory committee.
Right. As a way to frame a discussion.
Right. And so, that, and I think as we go out to our community, it is helpful to have some options to frame the discussion, as the city manager just pointed out. But we are not, we are committed to a ceiling based on what we post. We would have to repost if we want to change that. But within this, we can come up with a wide variety of options. We just can't exceed...
The highest option.
Right.
That's correct, Mayor.
So, Mayor, that's my concern, is that we're posting a legal notice before even talking to us and having input. And see, I still don't understand. I asked a question, why did we have to come to the council to post a legal notice for the water and not this one? I don't want to end up being another Uber-Lift situation where we say, whoop, we slipped, we forgot. So, before, we could have a debate about it and conversation instead of on the 11th hour before it's posted. I believe that we should have been informed. We should have had this type of conversation and came up with some different options that you all could have gone back and researched and brought back to us, right? So, that's where I'm frustrated, with this whole posting a legal notice without getting our approval or even us being a part of the conversation, where in the past, it has.
Deputy City Manager.
Mayor, Councilman Noakowski, we have not yet posted. We will need to post, but the distinction between this scenario and the water rate scenario is that state law requires that the council act to post that notice. That is the only notice that's required by state law to be acted on by the council. Other fees that the city raises can be done without action of the council to just post the notice. But obviously, action to implement an increase would be a decision of this council.
But, but isn't it more transparent just to do it the way we do with water? I mean, at least it gives the public fair time to debate it, discuss it, come in here and talk about it. I mean, it, just because state law says you don't have to do it, doesn't mean we shouldn't be doing it the exact same way.
I'm sorry, if I was unclear, Mayor, Councilman DeCecio, we will be posting. There is transparency notice to the, to the community of this, this conversation taking place. Yes.
And so, what are you going to post?
Attachment A.
Attachment A.
But why would you do that when we've already, there's no consensus up here as to what it should be?
Because we just asked them to go out and meet with the community
Right.
and have options and have, frame the discussion.
But should, yeah, but...
Well, if we, if we want to have all the answers before we go to the community, that is a different set of guidance than we have just given them.
Why not go to the community and then come back with the options? Yeah, I'll go along with what you want to do, Mayor, on that. But at the end of the day, it seems like it's more logical to go out to the community, find out what they want. There are individuals here that like us to expand it even further. Why not put that on the table, too? I mean, why limit ourselves to just this when we could probably have more? And if there, I mean, some individuals, I don't know what that would look like. You know, I'm not Generation Z. A little older than that. But I don't know what the, you know, some of the individuals might come up with. They might say, hey, look, we'd like you to expand this thing out. We'd like to see what else is available out there. Why not?
So, is my understanding, what are you posting? You're posting to go out to the community, community with these options? What is it that you're posting?
We're posting attachment A because we have to have a minimum of, this has to be out a minimum of 60 days before the council can take any action. So, this, the, this discussion today and the posting event starts a minimum 60-day clock running for everything that you've asked for, information, public involvement. That, that will all happen in a minimum of 60 days.
We're posting today or tomorrow, whatever happens. You're posting, what day are you posting?
We will, we would put this on the website tomorrow in, in the website area that's required.
Because we had this dialogue now where you can post? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Okay. So, because we had this dialogue, you're posting 60 days. When do you plan on coming back?
The earliest would be January 29th, but we would have to have the information you seek in order to come back with something. But the earliest date would be January 29th, 2020.
Okay. So, it is a much larger and more public process than is required. We are going above and beyond what is required. Councilwoman Stark.
And it sounds like you might actually come back with a different scenario, depending on what we hear from the public, right?
Correct.
This is just to start a dialogue.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Stark, or Pastore.
So, I know you, we're, we have said 10 meetings, but I think what I am going to do is have, roll out to all my community meetings December, but I'm going to need staff to roll out with me. So, I'm going to hit every one of my community meetings, oh, I guess in January I have time, too, to roll out. And I just need staff, so.
Staff will be available, yes.
Thank you. We are adjourned.